All right. It is six o'clock and we will call the meeting of the Acton School Committee, October 10th, 2017, to order at this time, and we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any adjustments to the agenda tonight?
Only one, which is number three. Our presenters are Patty and Mike. Norma has the night off. She's 50 minutes away and she's here the next two nights for parent-teacher conferences. So Mike was happy to stump tonight with the technology side, and Patty will present the teaching and learning side tonight. It'll be Patty and Mike.
I had asked that there be a 1.3, which is the executive session piece, just to report out whenever we have an executive session.
It's listed as nine on the Act.
No, no.
That's to go into.
This is to report back from last month.
Last month.
Got it.
We've had 1.3 and then all of a sudden it disappeared.
Right.
So it's just a report out.
Okay. Our executive session in September was to complete the first full year evaluation for our superintendent principal.
Yep.
Mary.
Any comments from the public? I guess not.
Get in line.
If anybody wants to, just speak right up. Okay, let's move on to a celebration of learning, which is going to be presented to us tonight by Patty and Mike.
I could just preface this before you two take the stage. Now, I will move because I think you need technology, but I just want to mention to the board that we had a really fantastic ERD about a month ago, less than a month ago, where I said, boy, we're really going to have you guys talk to the board about this. It's about individualized instruction and how to use technology to really teach to the individual. And I was quite impressed with the work that Patty's done at the K-2 level and the leadership she's provided to us in this area so far. So I'll turn it over to her. Thank you.
Okay.
It's not.
There we go.
I'm just going to talk about the slides. It's not real.
That's good.
First, I want to say that I just received an email from iXL directly relating to PD and a paid service that we would have to invest in, and I think they do this, or we're about to demonstrate, or something similar to it. So this is classroom and student achievement growth goals, combining the data from NWA with the resources of iXL, which is a learning tool, resource we use that targets ELA, math, science, and social studies that aligns to all of the state and national standards. Want to talk on these ones in the morning?
Yes.
Okay. So we were trying to come up with a way, and Francine came up with this as a way to measure classroom growth. So what we did was we took a report from NWA that spits out the class, and there's a column that's highlighted in red right there as their projected growth goal for the winter. So we took those numbers and averaged them to get a class growth goal average. I mean, measuring an entire class isn't technically fair, but it's the most effective approach I think we had to accomplish this. So then the teachers would document their growth goal expectations for each of the subjects that were assessed through NWA. And this example would be first grade, I believe it's Patty's. And then using the NWAs, there's a report called Learning Achievements. Right now, Learning Continuing.
Learning Continuing.
Learning Continuing.
Yeah.
And using this tool, it automatically groups students based on their RIT scores and assigns them standards that will help their test performance and their growth.
So don't turn this slide when you're done talking about it.
You want to talk about it?
Well, I just wanted to tell them, so after Mike reintroduced us to this, because he's introduced us to these reports before, and they can be daunting when you look at them. But Norma and I decided to just kind of sit and play around with looking at ways that we could figure out which kids needed to, or what they needed to practice. So if you look on each of them, there's a standard there, and the kids' names, where it says no students, the kids' names go down the side. So what we did was we looked at each child's area that they need to practice in. And I took mine, I put the standard and the kids' names going vertically down the side. And I have already gone through the math and am ready to go into the language arts piece, and have lists of the standards they need to work on, right back into the kindergarten ones that some of mine still need to work on. And so from those lists, I went into iXL and into the common core of iXL, and you can look under there, and it'll list the activities in iXL that will help them practice to better learn that standard. And so I have lists going of my kids. Sally Puffer has done hers horizontally, because I've looked at hers, because I mentor her. I do mine vertically. And from there, after looking at all the activities they can do to practice in iXL, I have a, I've always used an iXL assignment sheet, like when we would go in the computer lab, these are the iXL activities that I want you to work on. But I've never used this to decide what I wanted them to work on, because that next step, until Mike did that PD with us, that next step was always like a wall that I hit and wasn't ready, couldn't figure out how to go one step further. So we're starting to get into it more now. In my classroom, my kids now have their technology, so I made these for them. They have their spelling words on one side if they need to practice, and on the other side, I've listed the math activities they need to work on in iXL, and when I've gone through the language arts, they'll have these. So when they finish their work early, they get their Chromebook, they get this, and their activities are listed there that they need to work on. Then I go in the reports, and once they've gotten 100%, I change those activities out, the ones they need to practice, and put new ones in. All right? So, I mean, you know, you just keep changing them up as they go through and as they learn them and they practice the standards that NWA says that they're not doing really well in. And I had to talk to my kids a little bit because I did put a K next to them, all but two of them, I believe. And I said, what have I always said to you? You are working where you need to work, and you need to back up a little bit, do a little bit of practice here, and then we'll move forward. And they were all, they were all good with it, you know, because, you know, like I told Sally Puffer, when she thought about having some of her kids have to back up a little bit, I said, it's all in the presentation. It's all in the way you present it to them, you know, so it's a way that they understand that this is how they're going to get what they need. And then in the winter, mine will take the NWA again. I did that last year. I want the information this year so that I can go back in and back up again if we need to, if they still don't have it. So, I mean, that's where Norma and I are right now with the iXL. I have not gotten into Education City, which I hear we still have. So Mike has put our kids' names in it, so I can then go in, and if there are things that need to be fine-tuned again, that's another way that they can practice and, you know, get what they need. But every child has their own. Everyone is working where they need to be. So that's pretty much where we are right now and where, after that PD, it looks like there are several teachers in one form or another going in and getting what the kids need. Some more independent. I told my kids, I said, this is the beginning of you being independent, you know? I decide what they're working on. And I said, if I see that you're working a lot in math, because that's where you want to be, and you're not working on your language arts, math will disappear for a little bit. Work in some language arts. But my kids were really excited about it, going over, getting their own paper, doing their own thing, picking up when they needed to. So the hope is that this is where it needs to be. Do I think it could go even further than that? I don't know. Data is hard for me, and I will say that, but this feels like it's the right way to go, so.
This reporting mechanism, this tool, as I mentioned, it auto-groups the students so you can quickly individualize learning that aligns to standards, and there's a magnitude of resources available. Education City is one that's good for K to second grade. There's also Khan Academy resources for math. So if a math teacher wants the students to just watch a few Khan Academy videos or do some Khan Academy activities, because they have some online resources, they can do that as well. But we didn't delve into that during our exercise, but that's another resource available. So using this data, which is quick and easy to access, and it can go vertically up and down for the standards required or needed to grow. For instance, Sandra Packard's class, just look at their standards that were listed, and it went all the way to kindergarten. So if you wanted to go as far back to kindergarten and start to build on those standards, you get to fifth grade, you can do it through this reporting system.
So I think one of the exciting things for me is to look at an opportunity in proficiency-based learning. The question is, for a student, what do I need to learn? So they know what they need to learn, they know why they need to learn it, and they know where they're deficient, and how much they need to learn. And it's all connected through technology, and I think the older students are, the more in the driver's seat they will be. Thank you, Mike and Patty.
Yeah.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thanks, Andy.
So there are different programs then. This is one program that can address the standards, and then, yeah, there are other programs that you mentioned, those do the same thing.
And what's here is all individual too. The kids work at their own speed, so it's very much more individualized than it used to be. It's good.
No, I thought it was excellent, so thank you. I like the connection between the NWA and iXL, as I tell it to my daughter and it makes her annoyed. iXL. But what I want to point out too is, yeah, maybe. If you go back to like the second slide where you had the NWA data and you were averaging the growth goals, what I want to point out too, because I think this is an excellent example of, because I know, I believe, John, we're still working on the goals, like the strategic, the achievement goals, but I thought this was a really good example of sort of what I think we're envisioning in regards to what are some of the goals we might have. So that might be one way to present the goals. I could see it being, you know, for the classes, we have an average growth goal that we're looking for by the end of the year, 20 growth points. It might be that, you know, 50% of them, we want to see this, what have you. There's a variety of ways of doing it, but I think that's excellent. Having that, then we, then the next piece of information which we received, so having a specific goal, I think is fantastic. So now I know, I want to, I'm already enticed by the end of the year, I want to see what the spring data show, I want to know if we met our goals. What I'm particularly interested in too is that, okay, we have a goal, then what's the plan? And then I would really love to hear about, so whatever the goals are, what's sort of the comprehensive plan? In this case, it would be multiple strategies. So this is one really good, I think, strategy and approach where we're using some of the software and the technology. So we'll meet our goal because we're going to use iXL this way, we're going to use Education City, we're going to do this with our M-Banks. And then periodically, we won't have the data till the spring, but what we can ask about as a committee is, how's progress growing? How many kids are using the iXL? How's that, so we can get a sense of progress towards those goals? Those are the conversations I want to keep having. And I thought this was an excellent example of what we're kind of looking to move to do on a monthly, frequent basis. So I just want to point that out. I think this is what we're going for. This is great.
And I'll do the winter NWA, the complete one, not the shortened one. Because then you also get to see what your progress is and whether or not you're on track.
Yeah, and what I'm particularly interested in is too, like the, where you have the higher growth goals, those are the students, if I'm reading it correctly and if my memory serves me right, the higher the projected growth goal, the lower they've been performing because there's more room for them to make up. So I would be particularly interested is, bottom line is, all students, we want to, for everything they're learning, we want all students to demonstrate at least a year's worth of growth. Some students who are behind where we would want them to be, they have to accelerate that growth, so we have to have more than a year's worth of growth. So that's where it's helped that are sort of, so are the students who needing to be make more than a year's worth of growth, are they? Are there students who we want the right on and that we want to keep them on, are they getting ahead, and that sort of thing? So those are the data that are really interesting. But we've got some good data points there that gives us sort of a window into that perspective. So I think this is great. So thank you.
So it's great to have the technology to support this kind of teaching and learning. And a lot of this is augmented. It's the other kinds of teaching and learning that are happening, other than direct instruction from the classroom teacher. And iXL and the one-to-one technology initiative's been excellent for our students.
Great. Anybody else have any questions or comments?
I don't want it to go totally computerized.
That's why I said it's one strategy about a comprehensive approach. I want to know what's the curriculum doing, what's the projects doing, it's the other pieces, it's just not a, yeah.
We're very careful with screen time. I mean, when they finish that. No, they have so many activities during the day.
Right, yeah.
I know they're not sitting there for hours. I understand.
Right. But still, I get it, yeah. You definitely, I mean, there's always that individual, you know, spelling lesson at home that, you know, one-on-one time during center time where you do the small group instruction and, you know, and still math instruction and stuff like that. That stuff's still happening, it's just that this happens more and more.
Right.
They're not just sitting there doing nothing.
No, it looks good. Especially, I could see that helping people who need to go forward.
And the extra work, I don't know, either way, whatever. Very purposeful use of time that kids have when they finish an activity, they finish something.
There's no more sitting around.
It's just not, yeah. It's very focused and guided time for them to use, yeah.
I wonder if to, something nice and concrete, there's, it's advantageous if there are easy ways to increase family engagement around things like this. And I find, I just know from my own experience over, what was it, like a couple weeks ago, my daughter was working on something in math, and she had some iXls to practice. So I'm able to stand, you know, sit there with her, and if there's one that's struggling, because she doesn't like to get one wrong. So she's like, I'm not sure about this one. So we talked about it, so there's a teachable moment there, but it's a nice structured resource, iXL, that really I think would make family engagement easier. And that's, or, because even if you get it wrong, and sometimes I'm looking at a problem like, I don't remember how to do that, let's get it wrong, and let's see what it says. Okay, let's try to figure it out, all right, we can do it that way. But I think some of these resources might lend themselves to really specific, concrete strategies that can go home to sort of say, on your end as a parent, you can really help out with these things.
Yeah, and I'll put that in my, in my class notes. And also, I have my first parent conference today, and, because they can't make it tomorrow on Thursday, and we had a big conversation. They don't have a computer at home, and they're getting one, because their daughter is really excited about doing some of these things at home. So we had a conversation about that. So you're right, it is a good talking point with parents, good way to, you know, to have them spend that time together, because I get the reports anyway, as long as they're logged in.
If there's, there's some interesting research out there, I'm not familiar with closely, but I'm aware of, and I know folks who do this work, where it's a shift on the parent-teacher conferences, and they call them academic parent-teacher teams. And what they do is, like, this would be a really good example. And there's a data-driven piece to it where the parents go in and they have activities where they look at some of the classroom data, anonymous, but, and then parents are told where their kids are at, but they, there's a little bit of a contextual, these are where the student's performing, these are the strengths, these are the challenges, this is what we're focusing on in the next interim. But then what parents or the teacher does during the conference, it's kind of a group piece, but it can also be individual, is, given this, here are three strategies I'm going to teach you, parents, that you can do at home with the students. So when your child comes home, whether, so it could be a training on, here's how you can use iXL to foster conversation so that you can support the practice at home. So it flips it to parent-teacher conferences, become teaching parents on concrete strategies, data-driven, that the parents can then do between now and the next conference. And the research behind it is off the charts. That, yeah, and schools that are doing that, they're seeing the...
But don't you think even in the parent-teacher conference, they should be kind of taught our PBIS, you know, the level of voice, just the same language?
That's another example, that's a really good example, yeah.
The same language, so the kids are getting it.
Right.
Some parents will do it, I would have done it.
Yeah. We were in Mastery Connect today, just to say, okay, so when you see red, that's a beginning to spot, you know, good talking points, and ask your child, is this new? Do you need help? Or shoot me an email so that I can kind of coach them, you know, just like that.
Yeah.
You know, parents want to be involved, you need to just...
But it's a flip on the, it's a kind of a flipping the traditional model of, usually you go to your parent-teacher conference and you get information about how Sally and Johnny's doing. Well, you get, here's how Sally and Johnny are doing, here's Sally's goals. All right, let me teach you what you can do, you know, here's some things to build your skill set.
I think you have to.
Yeah. But it's not, it's not typical, but it's powerful. The family engagement piece is critical.
You'd have to give us some information.
I can, I can get that.
And the parents are there, so it's probably a willing participant. I mean, you're talking to teachers, you're talking to parents who are engaged, they're there, they're present, they probably appreciate the opportunity to learn a little bit about how to help their kids at home.
Yeah.
I also think it's a real good way for the community to understand, people aren't familiar with the way things work here within the school, it's a good way for the community members to understand how effectively all the technology that we've put into each classroom, how effectively it's being used, and it's not just that they have an iPad to play on when there's free time or whatever, but that they're actually being used to guide instruction and to reinforce regular classroom instruction. I think that's, that's a good point, too.
Exactly.
Anybody have anything else to ask about number three?
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Excellent, thank you.
And Mike, thank you.
Yeah. I like how you did it on the phone, too. You had the whole Apple TV going on.
He's multitasking right there.
Okay, then let's move on to number four. And I'll look for a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So moved?
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded, that we accept the consent agenda. All those in favor? Okay, let's move on to number five, and we'll start with a superintendent update, and then we'll see if anybody has any questions for anybody, any of the administrators in the consent agenda reports.
Excellent, thank you. We had a really good PD workshop Friday. Kids had the day off, the teacher staff was here with the administrators, and we had, the beginning of the day was really a focus on improving teaching. And Ron Robert, who was recently retired from SAD 60 North Berwick Elementary School, also Principal of the Year, a connection that Kevin had made for me, professional connection in education, came and helped us out a little bit. He has a background, he's an excellent facilitator, many years at the elementary level, and has a background in working with the PLC format. So we're doing a little bit of a reset with how we're using our ERD time in regards to just a question about improving our teaching practices and having protocol-driven discussions and processes. I was fortunate enough to be with Kevin a week ago, where he was in a school in New Hampshire recently and learned a lot, and brought some of those practices back here. And of course, Kevin's also presented to the faculty before my time. So we're, we're looking at our toolkit and expanding our horizons of our own professional development. And in the afternoon, Mike developed a very engaging technology PD, and they're laughing because they all had a chance to write a story using Google products, so they all had their way of, and it got interesting. Everything, I think we kind of ended up with everything from Little House in the Woods to Fifty Shades of Grey by the time we were done with this. Just a joke. It was very interesting processes, everybody's putting in their pieces of the story and learning technology. Of course, it wasn't the actual story, although it was very fun. It was the transition and the technology transfer to the teachers to learn how to use this with the kids. And of course, with kids, they'll pick up on it very quickly. So that afternoon was a great demonstration of how to use, again, the technology we're so blessed to have in the school department. PT conferences, parent-teacher conferences, I guess have started today. They're scheduled for tomorrow and the next day, and many of our teachers will be doing more than just tomorrow and the next day to make sure that they can get as many parents that want to come see us to come in. We've got the word out through our classroom notes, through my updates to the parents, and hopefully we'll have a good turnout over the next two days to see how our kids are doing. Trunk or Treat is coming right up on Saturday, the 28th. We'll change the sign tomorrow to have that advertised. That's just one of the community fun pieces that I just wanted the community to know about. Last year, I was blown away with the number of people that were here for Trunk or Treat. It was just amazing. The cars were lined up from the corner, it seems like, and I was like, oh my gosh, what's going on at school? And of course, I didn't show up dressed as anything, because I wanted to scope it out. So this year, we got a different plan on how Mr. Ross and the front office staff will be engaged in Trunk or Treat. More to come on that. And finally, you know, there's times in your life as a professional public school administrator where you go, uh-oh, I'm not sure how this is going to work. So I contacted Judy last week, and I said, Wednesday night, I said, I got an uh-oh moment, I'm not sure how this is going to work out, but our pump for our water and our backup pump kind of aren't working, and the nearest one's California. So I'll do what I can, and I want to give parents plenty of time to address a day off from school if we have to do that. I'd hate to have to shut down school, but you can't run a school without water. So Andy was on this at four o'clock in the afternoon, we knew the pumps were in California, and I said, I'll give you, I said, well, I've had it all written up, I leaned in on him, and I said, okay, by five, I'm going to make the call by five o'clock. Well, then Buddy, the plumber, came over and we talked with Andy, and I said, I'll tell you, I'll give you guys two hours by seven o'clock. I got to know by seven, because it's going to impact people the next day. They don't expect the school to be closed. 6:59, he gives me a call. I'm ready, I had the email to you guys first, the school committee needs to know, and then it's going out to parents. Says, John, we're go, we're all set. So he just really got going on this, and we never missed a beat. Unless I brought it up, a lot of people wouldn't even know. But I want to thank Andy and Buddy and Bruce, right? Bruce came in and helped.
Yep, yep.
Real team effort, I couldn't be more proud of you guys, I mean...
Thank you too for communication and...
You bet.
You know? No pressure. No water pressure. Literally, but thank you.
Have the new, have the new pumps come yet?
They received them in Exeter, New Hampshire today, and they'll be installed tomorrow. We only did expedited shipping on one, because we can operate on one and save a little bit of money, and then once the other one's here, we'll be all set. Yep.
The second one acts as a backup, right?
Yes, yep.
Is there any plan at all about tying these into the security system so that we have some kind of an idea when one goes?
The current panel that we have now, because of long-term planning, we've talked about updating the panel, the current panel is obviously dated and it's maxed out as far as the number of zones that can be connected to it. When we update the panel, at some point in the future, we're going to, we definitely need to tie that system into the panel so that, you know, we're alerted that, you know, either one pump is down, two pumps are down, and it would be the same thing as any emergency call that we get through Protection One.
This happened right after school ended, or...
It happened during the day. Initially, it shut off at like one in the afternoon, and then I got it started back up, and then at three o'clock, I was in John's office.
But everyone was gone by then, just about.
Right. Yeah. We were okay at that end.
It's kind of a dip. Serendipitous.
Yeah. It really couldn't have worked out better, and, and, you know, I've learned more about probably commercial-grade plumbing than I needed to know, working through this process. And Andy's already pulled the pump heads off for the replacement of the new one, and then eventually the second one. And one of the things we talked about is, if the pump material itself is good, it's the motor that went. If we can get the motor rebuilt at a decent cost, and that's like a backup system if we ever need it, because this is a brand that, you know, you have to go to California to get these things, so to have one. But we were calling around other school districts and making connections, hey, any chance you got this kind of a pump somewhere in an attic? What are the chances, right? But we had a maintenance person from SAD sixty stop by, I mean, we really networked with our professional contacts. And we had a lot of people in York County.
Trying to help.
They were going like this, and I texted him, I said, we got water. So good job all around, and that's the end of my report, thank you.
Anybody have any questions or comments about the administrative reports and the consent agenda?
I'd like to hear from Francine how the PLC workshop by Kevin went.
That was horrible. No, actually, it was a lot of very good information that John and I were able to bring back, and with the help of Ron, implement immediately. And with the few little exercises that the teachers did, you could see that they kind of saw a better path towards using their time more effectively. And, you know, I had, I was able to find, I've written out formal lesson plan that they were all able to sit and go over, and just to develop some very, just nondescript, or completely anonymous feedback, because they don't know who this person is. But so they could see how that process goes. And the issue was, nobody really sits and writes out big formal lesson plans, unless you're taking a class, or you're going to be observed, and you need to have that in your file. But for, if somebody just has the idea that they need to share, they want to run it by, I think everybody kind of has a better idea of how they could use that feedback loop.
Yes.
To help kind of guide that.
To help them. I just had one other question.
And the lunch was great.
Not for you, for Kim. Did the meeting happen on October sixth? That was not here. Yeah, okay, that's all I want to know, if it actually happened.
We're, we're going to talk on that later.
Anybody else have anything on the consent agenda?
No, the, the Google Classroom thing, it sounds really cool, so, kudos.
Yeah.
We, something I haven't done before, but instead of using a PowerPoint or a Google Slide presentation to do what I did, project your information, the teachers collaborated on a document. First, they did a brainstorming document together, learned how to collaborate on that by manipulating it at the same time. They took that brainstorming information and ideas, and translated it to an interactive book through a slide show. So each person would make a linkable item on the bottom, and the, the, the subject was, you decided to, and then it'd be like, walk, run, hide. You click on it, and go to another slide. And then there, there would be another description of what you're doing there, and then more options. So, yeah, as John mentioned, there were some rather appropriate stories that were developed.
Teachers being abducted by aliens, things like that, really interesting fiction.
So it was a choose-your-own-adventure story?
In the end, I think people are enjoying themselves, being creative with it.
And the goal was to build their facility using the technology.
Get them comfortable with collaboration and develop, you know, the only tool.
And we're in different places, as you can imagine, some are very comfortable, and some are, okay, just, you know, Mike, you need to be beside me the first time I do this. So we have our range, but all in all, it's a real good push forward.
All right, then, let's move on to number six. Long-range planning committee did not meet today, right?
It did not meet.
Okay, and the policy committee is setting up a schedule of meetings?
I have. Yes, I have November third and December sixth, Jeanette, for you to, to consider. And perhaps as we, maybe even right after executive session, before we go, while we have Kevin live, we can maybe get into, can we look at January and February?
We probably should, that's fine.
Can you go that far out?
Yeah.
All right, so thank you for working with us, because I mentioned before, when we work around your schedule, it, it worked fine last year.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Meet once a month, no problem. Kim, do you feel as though, and I, I meant to ask you this early, I don't mean to put you in a spot, but if Kevin were to be available for more than one time in November and December, and we did two policies, could we use up to four policy committees in, between now and the holiday break? Because I found the time in his schedule, so we could actually double up if we wanted to to catch up? Is that needed? Okay. Now, maybe we can build that into, depending on how flexible you are, if it's one or two dates you might be able to give us. Excellent, because you did give me two on each month, and I picked one from...
That's fine, and the other, if you want those other ones, just get it quick.
That's why I asked, right?
Yeah, because they could change, too, I may, I could lose them.
Okay. We seem pretty flexible, aren't we, Jeanette, being able to meet him?
Sorry to be the, the...
One never knows.
I also wonder if there's some ways to do it asynchronously.
Probably.
Well, we can talk about that.
Okay, so let's move on to number seven, which is new business. And under new business, seven one is the regionalization plan, and I know John's got some info on that.
I met with Judy last week in developing this agenda, and went over a PowerPoint that I shared with the staff at my faculty meeting the day after, which would be a week from tomorrow. And there's a lot to it, I'm not going to go over this PowerPoint now with you. I think what I'd rather do is I'll, I'll hit some of the highlights of it to inform you, but this is being discussed on the seventeenth, which is a week from tonight, in Sauk. And we've been invited as a school committee and superintendent to go with other York County school committees and superintendents to hear a presentation on this, nine through twelve regional service centers from the commissioners. My understanding, the commissioner will be there, Kim's going with us as well, because there's a, there's the financial piece that we need to kind of look at here in our own town. And Drummond and Woodson is part of this, too. They originally were the host, and, and now the commissioner's part of this, which I think is great, so we can get the MDOE questions right, hopefully get an answer right there at the dinner. But the idea is, it's not, it's not consolidation. Let me start by saying, this isn't a push to consolidate school districts so that they lose their local identity. The idea is to share costs as much as a region can share. So for instance, most of the students in the state of Maine are in York and Cumberland County, and then in the Bangor area, and then they're spread out pretty much all over the state. But you can bet that if there are going to be nine, twelve regional service centers, that in the state, although they haven't defined where they would be, York and Cumberland County would probably have more than one each, because of the numbers of the schools and the size of the systems. I'm not sure how they're going to tackle that. The commissioner did say in a meeting that I, that I was in, he's not sold on nine to twelve. That's just what's in the presentation of the law right now, as they look at funding, funding this idea of regionalization. Startup costs for regionalization, as you'll hear, if you are able to go to the dinner, will be provided by the state. And member school districts, it's almost like you join a co-op, so there's also an assessment to a member school. So if we join a regionalization service center, there would also be some sort of dues for us as, as well. We, we don't know what that is, but it would be set up by that particular service center. That's another thing that's interesting, is they give us some parameters and some ideas, but it's up to the service center to really define itself, as to what they'll share. And as I mentioned to the commissioner, I said, boy, there's a lot of small school districts in the state of Maine. And school districts like ours, you learn to share, you learn, you survive by being a regional. So my pitch, and I'll get right to it now, is, you know, can we be recognized for the work we already do? Think of all the things we already do. They're looking for the big SADs and SAUs to do what we already do, well, we do it by nature because of our size. And that's kind of the angle, I think, that makes sense for us to kind of pose as a position, if we need to take a position about this. But we really need to find out some more things before we probably get to that point. If a district does not participate, a certain amount of funding will be held within the EPS formula. Okay, a certain amount, I don't know what that amount is, but Kim's going to be there with us, and we'll run the numbers, because that's what it'll come down to. I mean, our current state subsidy for this, this year that we're living in right now is one ninety-two, oh twenty-two. So it's a, just under two hundred thousand dollars, so it's not small dollars, it's a fairly significant amount. You know, it's, it's less than many systems in the state of Maine, and it's a small, really a small percent of our budget, because we're a low receiver. Think of a big system where forty to fifty percent of their revenue to develop and run their school educational programming is in state subsidy. They have no choice but to regionalize, I mean, and it's forced, because at a per-student amount, they couldn't, they couldn't afford to lose that.
What's the date on that again?
The seventeenth, it's six thirty to eight thirty. It's now a week from tonight. I think you mentioned you might be away, but you weren't sure.
I think I'm flying home that day.
Okay, and I've got commitments from Jeanette. Jeanette and Judy are going to go together, Kim and I will lead you down there.
First birthday.
Okay, and we can talk, you know, what will, clearly, this is our first opportunity as a group to get together and really hear it firsthand. There's four categories, the first one has to do with really sharing special education services, including summer school and extended school year. The second category really gets into things that every school system has, substitute teacher pools, technology and technology support. PD, which there's been district initiatives before around professional development regionally, which really does make sense. If you're going to do something around Marzano, and it's happening at fifty-seven, and all the acting teachers will go. So in the, in that spirit, it really does make sense for a lot of these categories to come together. Category three is central office services, financial, superintendency, food service, purchasing and budgeting. And category four is facilities and transportation. You know, your fiscal plan, what can you do there to share anything? And maintenance, energy management facilities. I mean, just the fact that we share our oil bid with Sanford is just one of about probably a half dozen things that can really kind of make the case. But I think it's, I think it's important that we go and learn, and that we work with Kim to run the numbers and see what it would look like, and find out what the associated costs are to be part of a region, find out what the cost would be if we choose not to be part of a region, or best-case scenario is get a stay on what we're doing, because we're already sort of doing what the state wants us to do, because of the nature of our small community. And, and take it, take it from there. Judy, what's your thinking on that? Kind of sums up what we talked about at your kitchen table last week.
Yeah, I, I mean, we've, we've been down this road before.
Sounds very familiar.
It does.
It sounds very... Penalty in case we don't want to do anything.
The penalty would be a loss of state revenue, that would be the biggest penalty that we would have.
But you don't know how much, because we are doing things that a region wants.
And we also know that we don't get much compared with other systems anyway, because we're a low receiver. The, the thing, one of the things that John and I talked about was, you know, would this in any way affect our contract with Sanford? If Sanford is in one of these co-op regions, then would we still be able to have a private contract with them? Because now they're going to be a part of a region.
Right, so that, you got to ask right after.
We need to know who's contracting with it.
That's a definite question. Transportation might be another one. If there's a transportation director for the whole big district, then how would that affect transportation for, for our kids up here?
You know, if they have a region thing, just say, Sanford's in it, we just got to get into the Sanford one, because we're doing, you know, lots with Sanford, food director, you know, high school students, whatever.
Right. But the, but the, but the one with Sanford could also, it could include like SAD sixty, SAD fifty-seven.
Yeah, we don't know.
We don't know, but they could all be in the, yeah, they could all be in the same big one.
And then we just in it, and we're still doing the same stuff. I don't see how it would change much, it may even help us financially.
I would say we learn more.
But I don't think it'll change much.
Right.
And the other, the other thing was to find, would be to find out is how much it's going to cost us as a little system to be a part of this big picture.
Right.
Because with, when we were back on the consolidation stuff, the cost for us as a little town to be a part of this was ridiculous. And we would, and the other thing is, it, it's important for us to try to keep our autonomy, so that we can have a say in what's going on at our school. So that we can be sure to not lose any of the services and programs that we worked hard to get to at this point.
Or just say no.
It's, it's all a part of it, and as John was talking, talking to me about it, I was just sitting there going, no. No.
Yeah, we know this.
Yeah, been down this road.
And now, you know, we're really moving on what we see for the future of this school. And then it's like, put the brakes on, I don't want to put the brakes on.
So we'll, we'll go to the meeting and see.
Keep you updated.
It may be a fast turnaround. I mean, we haven't had a lot of guidance on the when, and I'm a little, I'm suspect that it'll happen fairly quickly, because at a meeting that I was at in September, the very efficient two-page, as it was described to us, regionalization document to begin to plan to be a region, was supposed to be out within a couple of weeks, and we haven't seen that yet. So I did text the superintendent friend of mine from a big district, who's really looking at this because of the budget side of it. I said, where are, where are we on this? Are you, you know, have you, have you started talking to other districts? Because we might be one, he says, we don't have any guidance on that yet. So the districts are waiting, the ones that are sure they're going to have to do something, because of the size of their state subsidy, haven't had enough clarifying information yet. But I was hearing that by first of the year. So that means November and December, we're going to really want to sharpen our pens and pencils, and do some homework, and see what the math is on this, and it might, I may be, you know, through Judy asking you, you know, can we convene? We really need to talk about this, we really need to make a decision. So we don't want to jump into something we're not sure about, because I also asked, how do you get divorced? Like, what if you get into this and it doesn't work for you, what's your secession plan? And of course, because there's no entry...
I don't think so.
...plan yet, there's real no secession plan either. But if you're at the table, and you're paying a certain amount, they're counting on you, and then you're like, well, this doesn't work for me, there's probably some debt service there to get out, at least it makes sense that there would be. So that's another question I'd like to know, if you're going to say yes, and then it doesn't work, what does going in reverse look like?
Can we sign an annulment?
Because the, the other thing is that, yeah, premarital, premarital, yeah. The other thing is, when you look back at how many systems have tried to pull out of consolidation, once they got in, it just didn't work for them. It was either it was too costly for the size of their system, or they didn't have enough say on the board to, to make it...
Small districts get represented, small schools.
For their communities and their towns. Lots of them have pulled out, and it hasn't been an easy process. And I'd rather not get in than try to figure out how to pull out if it's going to be. But we'll see what they say.
We'll ask some of those, but I got a list of some questions that I'll share when we get down there, depending on who else asked them. But I think we're unique in York County, we're the smallest school district in York County. So we have different concerns than most, we're not the only low receiver. There's some other low receivers, and their concerns are different because of their size. But it'll be interesting to see what some of the questions are, because they really won't pertain to us, and then see what some of the questions are that do pertain to us, and have our list if it's our turn to ask questions.
Just say no.
And then, you know, then there's, then there's also going to be coming up the idea of a statewide teacher contract. And that will probably tie into some of this regional, regionalization, so that teacher contracts would be across the board statewide, they would be, they would all be the same, so.
Wow, I don't think that would happen.
Well, that's, that's in the, it's in the crystal ball, somebody's crystal ball has it in there. So, I mean, that was another, that was another thing that, another reason that we wouldn't have been a good match, for instance, with Wells and Agonqua, because we would have had to have brought our teachers' salaries up to what they were paying in their very wealthy communities, you know, real tourist communities, and their salaries are very, a lot of businesses that help to support it. We don't have a lot of local business to support ours, so.
And we would have only had one, one member, right? Or was that with SAD sixty, we would have only had one member?
We would have very, we might just, well, not, yeah, we wouldn't really have represent, we'd have representation on a board, but our number would have been so small that we would literally have had no say in, in stuff like curriculum and any of those things if we were in that district, so. So, yeah, a lot for us to think about and see what, and see what we can find out at that meeting next week.
I think it's pretty neat, though, we're going into this with the experiences that you all had before, so that you know what that looks like, which is going to be unique compared to some other systems that didn't have the same.
You guys are grizzled veterans at this.
You've been down the road, you're right, right, so there's some familiarity, yeah.
Yeah, well, these, these don and hole attempts are not necessarily fun. They're, they're a lot of work, but...
And the people that we thought were on, working for us, all of a sudden turned around and began to work for the state against us. I can think of one person. Or maybe more than one.
So it's a wait and see.
Okay, wait and see.
It is, we'll keep you posted.
Yeah, anybody else want to go?
I want to go, but, sorry.
So we'll send the RSVP in tomorrow morning.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, then, school audit report.
You all have the final copy of the...
You all have the final copy of the electronic version. I was hoping today that in the mail you would have all had your form and copy, but because of the holiday, they'll probably all show up tomorrow. But our HR, Smith, finished the audit, and they had to make a couple of changes. They, they kind of misappropriated the reserve funds for the expenses we paid in the reserve fund, and I wanted more detail in the reserve funds.